Hello everyone, my name is Dan Wizenhun and I am editor. Hello everyone, my name is Dan Wizenhun and I am editor and founder of Decaturish.com. Welcome to the first of our many, many, many candidate forums for our November 4th municipal elections. You can find all of our elections coverage at Decaturishvotes.com. We are live streaming today's forum on Facebook, on the off chance. There's some technical glitch, don't worry, we're gonna record it, we're gonna upload it to YouTube later. We'll upload it to some other channels later, so you have plenty of opportunities to catch up on this exciting forum. Our first forum is gonna be for Decatur City Commission District 1. I wanted to introduce you to our candidates. First candidate is Katie Bell. Katie, how are you?
Doing well, thank you Dan for having us.
Thank you for joining us. And our other candidate is Mark Arnold. Mark, how are you sir?
I'm doing well. Thanks again for the opportunity in hosting this forum.
Thank you for being here. So the way it works is each candidate is gonna have two minutes to make an opening statement and two minutes to make a closing statement, and then we're gonna roll in the candidate questions. Each candidate is gonna have two minutes to answer each question. I have a very sophisticated timekeeping system. When a candidate is 30 seconds away from having to rap, I'm gonna hold up my church finger, so if any of you are watching wondering what that's about, that's my sophisticated way of keeping time. We're gonna alternate who begins and who ends, just so candidates don't have an advantage on each other. And with that, we've explained the rules, so let's get into it. Let's start with our opening statements and we'll start with Katie Bell.
Well, thank you so much Dan. Again, my name is Catherine Bell. I go by Katie or KB. I'm an LPC or Licensed Professional Counselor at Guide Counseling here in Decatur as a Couples and Family Therapist and an Approved Clinical Supervisor. I'm the Assistant Director of Clinical Services at Georgia State University. Before this, I was a school counselor and educator. I got my undergraduate from Berry College, which is where I met my husband of 12 years. We live here in the city of Decatur. And we've lived here since 2018. I got my Masters in School Counseling and an EDS in Community Counseling from Georgia Southern, so Go Eagles! And a PhD from Mercy University in Counselor Education and Supervision. I'm a cyclist here in Decatur. I love our walkable streets and also wanted to mention that I've had the privilege of running for this position four years ago. And since then, I've listened to community members, I've learned and stayed engaged, and I feel deeply and care deeply about our community. I originally ran on these three pillars and run on them again, and the first one is affordability. So creating a Decatur where everybody can continue to call Decatur home. Social and environmental justice, meaning that I like to protect our environment and all of our people in Decatur. And then third, safety first, so safe streets equal safe neighborhoods. And I'm ready to bring fresh energy and experience dedication to this work. So using my skills of listening and mediating conflict as well as tough challenges through life and building trust with community to which I live and love. And again, I want to thank Decaturish and Mark, thank you for stepping up and running as well. And I'm looking forward to really great conversations today.
Thank you. Mark Arnold, two minutes for your opening statement.
Okay, thank you. As Dan pointed out, my name is Mark Arnold. My family and I have lived in Decatur for 26 years now. My wife Roz and I raised our two girls here. Both proud graduates of City Schools of Decatur and our many dogs. And since day one, I've been just engaged in volunteering and collaborating in the schools, for festivals, serving on commissions. And if you wanna learn more about my community service, you can just go to markfordecatur.com and there's a whole sort of community service background page. I professionally, my current position is I'm Vice President of Analytics and Business Intelligence for a global Fortune 500 company. I spent a good part of my career in finance, and so financial acumen and expertise is one of the things that I bring to the race and contribute to the city. Why I'm running is like, I love Decatur. We've been here 26 years, we've raised our children here, it's been a great community. I know all my neighbors, they know me, they're warm, they're welcoming, they're inclusive, easy to get involved, and I wanna protect that and make sure that's available for many, many years to come. So a couple of things about my running, I think that continuing to deliver efficient essential services is critical. Completing the many plans that we started. And financial stewardship is important, given the economic and government headwinds we're facing and also managing the intense pressure for housing and affordable housing that we're confronting.
Thank you. We'll move into our first question and we'll start with Mark. Mark, what in your opinion is the role of a city commissioner?
So I would say the role of a city commissioner is really to, in the Decatur context, to lead this, you know, community-based government style that we have. We don't have a city commission that just gives a bunch of edicts. What we have is this very elaborate, robust, community-centered process of figuring out our vision, figuring out our priorities, and then bringing those to fruition. So the strategic plan's a great example, 1,000 Decaturites moved way then. We've had strategic plans every 10 years. The things that people care about get translated into plans and we have a 90-plus percentage rate of executing those plans. So it's about, you know, listening to the community, continuing that really inclusive, diverse collaborative style of community-based leadership. And I think that's the main role, and I think that's what our city leaders have done pretty well.
Thank you. Katie Bell, same question.
So when I think about commissioner, I think about communication and civil engagement and transparency. So I think good government starts with good communication. Residents deserve to know what's happening and how decisions are being made and how it impacts them, whether it be infrastructure, policy, allocating budget. I prioritize clear communication and open dialogue, because I think active outreach and ensuring all voices are heard are ideal. So when I think about three priorities for commissioner, I think about listening closely. So being committed to accessible and transparent, transparency and accountability. I think about honoring everyone's value, so whether it be in a forum or whether it be a part of a workforce, whether it be part of understanding how we operate in the city and move. I'm aware that, you know, at times our values often, priorities can differ, but there's always hope that we can communicate in a different way. And so I honor everyone's value in doing that. And third is taking action, and I mean business. I think oftentimes, government, we hear a lot about what we're going to say we're going to do. And I think it's important to make sure that the actions that we take as a governing entity reflect everyone in the city. And so that's why I think it's not only important to do that, but I have the energy and I'm ready to get things done. And that's what I think that our government should be reflective of.
Thank you. I'll pause here briefly for a shameless plug. We are doing our fall fundraiser. We are at more than $14,000 towards our $40,000 goal. It's been really incredible, the response. If you appreciate this forum and this opportunity we're giving you to hear from your candidates for these local races, please visit supportyourloconews.com and contribute to our fundraiser today. Katie Bell, we'll start this question with you. The city is currently undergoing a charter review process. A charter in essence is a city's constitution. It's what enables it to exist under the law. What are aspects of the city's charter that you would change, if any?
So that's a great question, because I think about the Charter Review Commission. And so I think this is a real opportunity to look at how Decatur governs itself and ask ourselves, does this reflect who we are today? So most importantly, I think that we are a transparent and involved community, and I think it's really important for us to maintain that. So I think any changes should be explained clearly and debated openly and shared by voices of all of our residents, not just who's in the room at the moment. And so I think I will make sure the process builds on trust. And I think using this as an opportunity to build trust rather than confusion is a really good opportunity. When thinking about changing things, I think, you know, it's important that my first job right now is to get elected to the commission and again, use my skills of listening to the community and ensure that whatever changes are made are ones that reflect the community as a whole.
Thank you. Mark Arnold, same question.
So in full disclosure, I should say that I am a member of the Charter Review Commission. So let me just state that clearly. So I would say that what's remarkable about our charter review process, and the charter is basically the city's constitution. The national center that manages and works with cities on their charter stated that Decatur is the only city in the nation that they've done this for, that has as inclusive a charter review committee. There were a number of positions appointed by commissioners and representatives of different stakeholder organizations, and then Decatur just ran an open lottery, and anyone and everyone who was interested could put their name in and had an equal shot, and so it's never been done in the country. We are the only ones ever to do this, so kudos to us. I'd probably say that the number one thing I'm interested in, and it's an active discussion, is moving from a mayor elected for one year by fellow commissioners to direct election of the mayor by the voters of Decatur. I think that's an important change. I think that change holds a number of very important benefits for the city. And I look forward to that discussion with my fellow charter commission members.
That's actually a great segue into our next question, because I remember years ago I asked, who was Peggy Maris, who was city manager at the time, about that very structure. And her take on it was that having a mayor elected by fellow commissioners actually helped the commissioners work better together, because you had to get buy-in at the outset every year and build a coalition before you even started governing. It's an interesting take on it. I can see arguments for both. But the reason it's a good segue, and we'll start with Mark Arnold, is if you were elected, how would you work with your fellow commissioners to accomplish your goals?
So I would say this, we face a number of challenges. Some are known, some are unknown. We've witnessed the largest remaking of the social contract in the federal government since the New Deal. That just has to have consequences. We're a highly taxed jurisdiction, we have a great desire for people to live in here, but we've got issues. Homelessness, affordable housing, road safety, so a lot of problems. And I can't tell you how they're gonna be resolved, but I can tell you how I would approach them. First, just have an open mind, right? Just have an open mind. No one has all the answers. Second, seek out diverse opinions. Just don't live in that echo chamber. Go talk to people that you probably don't agree with. And then third, remember that we have a set of shared community values and priorities that are articulated meticulously in our strategic plans. And those three things, I think, will create the space for us to do the work that people want us to do.
Thank you. Katie Bell, same question.
I think that's a great question, because I think it kinda speaks to my top three priorities as a commissioner, which is listening, so being committed to being accessible, transparent and accountable. I pride myself in doing the right thing when nobody's looking and having integrity. And I also am very good at listening. I've spent my entire career listening to people and mediating conflict in a productive way. Again, like I said earlier, I know that oftentimes that our opinions and the way we view life are different. And I also think that there's a way that we can communicate effectively, because there's always hope. And also, I think something that would be helpful, I think, that I would like to introduce is neighborhood tours, because I think standing beside someone, if you're working together and having a shared vision, it's important to talk to the community members daily. I think honoring everyone's values, the second thing I mentioned earlier. I'm aware that, again, our priorities may differ, but I think always having hope and feeling like everyone is seen and valued is incredibly important in a community. And third, taking action. Like I said earlier, I think oftentimes government do a lot of talking about things and not necessarily action, and I mean business. And I'm able to get things done and do them efficiently and have the, you know, energy to do so. That's Mr. Beef, he really wants to be a part of this forum. But I think those are the three things, or the three ways I would work with the commission.
Thank you so much. Katie, we'll start this next question with you. Decatur engages its citizens on various topics, including transportation projects and long-range planning. What is your opinion of the city's current engagement processes, and do you think they can be improved?
That's a great question. So I do really think that when we think about community action plans as community engagement, I think Better Together is a good example of that. I think plans need to reflect the voices of neighbors. You know, talking about equity earlier is really important, making sure everyone gets the resources that they need and that there's no systemic barriers to those. Everybody's included, whether this be affordable housing, decisions on that, community connections. It's not just ensuring that words are on paper, but that the things and the action plans we have in place are actively guiding decision-making. As commissioner, I think I would prioritize measurable progress that keeps residents engaged at every step. I hear that there is some miscommunication on when people can speak up or when there's availability to have input. And so again, like I said earlier, I think having a community tour, a neighborhood tour, where community members are able to have more input is a really important part of that process. So I think we do a really good job in Decatur and we have a lot of citizens. I think that the best strength of our community is our fierce hearts as a community and how we can have all voices at the table is really the important part.
Thank you. Mark Arnold, same question.
So Dan, I would say that we in Decatur are recognized nationally for our civic engagement model. It's, hello?
I'm with you.
Okay, the screen just went dark, I'm sorry. And you need to look no further than the 2020 strategic plan. Input from over 1,000 residents of Decatur, right? There are only 25,000 people in the city, so if you wanna talk about statistically significant, that's beyond any kind of statistical significance, right? We had websites dedicated to this. We had in-person roundtables for months. Then we had newsletters, we had mailers for particular issues that needed more attention. We had in-depth sessions diving deep into those things like diversity and inclusion and economic development. And then on top of that, we had a team of 90 volunteers that that wasn't enough, that spread out to the community to make sure everyone knew what was being discussed, had an opportunity to express their points of view. And so we had this really unique and nationally recognized, like, community-based leadership model. And I think we need to continue that, and I think it served us well.
Thank you so much. So this is sort of a personal complaint of mine, only because I've had to cover it. The city of Decatur holds its annual retreats, usually an hour to two hours outside of city limits. It's usually in the mountains somewhere. It's hard for the public to access. It's a two-day thing, and they do a lot of important work there. They kinda set their whole agenda for the year. And I have complained about it and will continue to complain about it until it stops or I am dead. But that has been my private beef, but I am curious, and you don't have to spend a lot of time on this topic. Starting with Mark, do you support the city commission having its annual retreats outside city limits?
I'm not familiar with the process that they go through or how that decision was arrived at. I've served on a number of both corporate, not-for-profit boards in the organizations, and it's not uncommon for them to have retreats somewhere other than their place of business. So that, in and of itself, that's not an uncommon thing. As far as the work, as long as the work product, the results are being accurately and fully shared and relayed, I think it's okay, but I don't have a strong position on it one way or another.
Katie, what about you?
I think earlier I mentioned that good government starts with good communication. So I do believe that residents deserve to know what's happening, how decisions are being made, how it impacts them. So I think I prioritize clear communication and open dialogue to ensure all voices are heard. So I think this might also speak to public notice and government transparency. Trust with government really starts with how openly we share information and invite participation. So whether it's a council vacancy or a new ordinance, having the retreats outside the city, people should never feel in the dark. And so something I can commit to is clear notices and more accessible language around that and real opportunities for residents to weigh in, because the process of feeling like you're involved and have a say should be easy and it should bring people together, which is a strength of mine, rather than pull people apart.
Thank you. Katie, you appear to have a guest. Will you introduce us? Aww.
So this is Mr. Beef. He's very upset. No, he is a part of the forum, but he's very popular in the city of Decatur. He even has a sandwich named after him at the brick store, but this is Mr. Beef.
Hi, Mr. Beef.
So he's way more popular than I am, but yeah, so he's wanting to be involved, so here he is. Thanks for the shout-out, Dan.
Welcome to the show, Mr. Beef. Katie, we'll start this question with you. The Decatur City Commission generally works pretty well together. Split votes are uncommon. Do you think that will be the case if you are elected, or are you looking to shake things up? You're on mute.
I think that's kind of too soon to make a prediction. I think it's my current job and responsibility to get elected to the commission. But once I'm on the commission and see, you know, kind of what the votes are, I think it'll be important to work as a team and also, again, listen to the voices of community members.
Thank you. Mark, same question.
Yeah, I think it's instructive to look at the surrounding communities in our area. And if you go back, well, you know, we've been here since 1999. What you've noticed is other communities have risen and fallen, but Decatur has been on this consistent, steady upward trajectory of growth, of development, of great schools, of great business community, of great neighborhoods. And that's really, you can link that directly to the way that successive elected governments have worked well to advance the common purpose, the common priorities that have been developed through those very inclusive collaborative community types of planning and governance. And so I absolutely think that it served us well, and I think we should certainly, I would look to continue to maintain that comedy and that way of working together and listening, collaborating, and really remember that we all have shared values, shared vision, shared priorities, which are not the commissioners, but are established by the residents. And so yes, so I would absolutely want to continue that success.
Thank you. I wanna applaud both of you for doing a great job of staying within time. It's gonna let us get to all of our questions, so I appreciate that. Mark Arnold, we're gonna start with you. In recent years, businesses have closed in downtown Decatur and have remained vacant for a very long time. Two buildings that come to mind are the old Starbucks space, the Ruby Tuesday space was vacant for a long time, and the Baby Kruger space is still vacant. It may one day become a Trader Joe's, who knows? But as of right now, it is not doing anything except collecting dust. What can the city do to encourage property owners to find tenants for these spaces rather than leave them vacant for years and years?
So, you know, Dan, partly what makes Decatur great is just this very vibrant business community, right? And so the local businesses around the square and Oakhurst throughout the city. So we really want to protect that and develop it and grow it. So concerning what specific actions the city could take, I think there are a couple of things. We can continue to support our DBA, our Decatur Development Authority, right? We should use, create that space and bring together the stakeholders, the property owners, the businesses, and the city to understand what the issues may be that may be preventing businesses from moving into space and seeing if we can find a common way forward. Another thing that I think would be very helpful to supporting and making our local businesses stronger is the kind of development that is being, in the town center plan, transit-oriented developments at the Avondale Martyr Station and so forth. What they do is they create density, and every business, what it cares about is a large addressable market. And so those developments bring more people to Decatur and make it more attractive to businesses to want to either move into Decatur or expand their operations, because they have this very large vibrant market. So I would say those are two things that we could look at as a city government.
Thank you. Katie Bell, what do you think?
So small businesses are definitely the soul of Decatur's economy. So I would support existing grants that are already in place, so like our commercial facade improvement grants, our build-out grants, our market digital connectivity grant, as well as continuing to develop new interests through creative means. Again, working with the Decatur Business Association is, DBA is incredibly important. And I think the thing that I come back to though, before, you know, we develop more, you know, kind of draw to the city, is we need to really use our listening ears, as I would say as an educator, but as, you know, listening professional, to first ensure retention of our current businesses. For example, we had a drip incubator that was downtown. That was a really great idea. I was really sad to see that brick and mortar location close. And so attracting new entrepreneurs are possible, and I think we can do that through potential, like, efficient business licensing and permit processing, but other things that we can continue to do that Mark touched on briefly was ensure that our spaces maintain walkability, right? And that we're attracting not only people to come to our city, but also to ensure that it reflects the wants and needs and desires of our current residents. Developing local talent is also something that I think about. So I know that in Decatur, we have a showcase of great talent and watching plays at the high school of all the students, but how can we get young entrepreneurs into our city or stay in our city? Or how can we kind of build on the things we already have, like walkability, increase transit access, right? And also make sure that we're incentivizing new as well. But first and foremost, we have got to ensure that retention of current businesses is remaining. And I think the way that we do that is by listening to current business owners and seeing, you know, and hearing what they say.
Thank you. The last two years have seen the removal of the Confederate Monument in the Decatur Square and the Thomas Jefferson statue, but one was less controversial than the other. Both were removed, because they no longer aligned with the community's values. And so my question to you, Katie Bell, and then to Mark, is do you support removing monuments and statues that no longer align with the community's values?
Yeah, that's a really, really great question. So I think, you know, Decatur's charm lies in its history and our unique neighbors. At the same time, you know, it's really important to that we're being very transparent and clear about what our values are. And so I think it's important that we are being honest and open about what it means to represent a Decatur where everybody feels included, where diversity is valued, and where equity is definitely at the forefront. We, as Decatur, are doing a really great job of that. I think in the establishment of the Reparation Task Force and thinking about one of Decatur's biggest accomplishments, that to me is one of the biggest accomplishments. It's important that, you know, we're being honest and transparent about how we can honor the history of our city, but also acknowledge that there's been some hurt in there as well, and it's about repair. And so, Decatur, we have the opportunity to be on the forefront of repair and modeling what great kind of repair looks like and honoring not only that the history of our city is maintained, and also at the same time that we're being honest about how we've hurt and repair people, make repairs with people in the process.
Mark, what about you?
Yeah, so I would say that this topic, not directly, but more broadly, of diversity and inclusion. diversity and inclusion was one of the key takeaways from the 2020 strategic plan leading to the creation of the reparations committee. And, and so like we do everything in Decatur, you know, there will be a community consensus, a community vision for this, a set of community actions and priorities. And we'll all be a part of that conversation. And at the end, it's, I think it's important for us to, to support what position the community lands on with regard to that. And, and so, you know, more broadly than a specific statue, you know, sometimes it's a, you know, if a statue, if you create context, a broader context around the meaning of that statue, you know, that could be okay. Sometimes, you know, the community may decide that it wants to remove it. But I think the important thing is it's this, again, collective, inclusive, community consensus on what the priorities should be and how we move forward together. And I'll support what the community wants to do.
I, I will note that the Confederate obelisk was replaced with a beautiful statue of John Lewis, who is a great American. So I think in, in that respect, we had an upgrade. I want to move into reader questions, but first, I'm going to do another shameless plug. If you are watching this forum right now, thank you for being hooked on local politics. If you appreciate the opportunity we're providing you to hear from these candidates today, please contribute to our fall fundraiser at supportyourlocalnews.com. We're going to start with our reader questions. Mark, we'll start with you. How do you plan to seek input from residents about how the city spends its money?
Ah, most people that know me know that I enjoy a good budget book. So that finance tends to be a, a natural thing for me. And so the process that we have, the budget development cycle, I think, works well. And Decatur, this is going to sound crazy, received an award as the best budget presentation for a city. Just think about that for a minute, right? So we're doing some really good things and we're doing them correctly, right? Nationally recognized the best budget presentation. I never knew there was such a word, but we got it, right? So what I would say is we've got this very well-developed process and, and it's, and it's very successful. What we can do is really make sure that we're using all the channels of communication, social media, the out, the 90, the 90-person outreach team that we had when we developed the 2020 strategic plan, the Decatur focus, and call people's attention to the fact that this budget is being developed. Set out a calendar, let everyone know when various aspects of the budget, from capital planning to setting the rate of, you know, your blue pay-as-you-go trash bags, and, and just really flooding the zone and giving every opportunity for people to show up and express their particular points of view on particular sections of the budget.
Thank you. Katie Bell, same question.
I love this question because I love thinking about community engagement and feeling, you know, that the process is, is open and that every voice is at the table. And the way that I plan to incorporate and communicate and engage the community is by asking first. What is your concerns? I mentioned earlier, doing Decatur Speaks, our neighborhood tours. I think the really, the most important part is listening and listening first and hearing all of our diverse opinions is, is where we start. I think, you know, we do look at that on social media. We look at that by using our current, you know, kinds of ways of communication, whether it be the newspaper, whether it be forums. But I also think, you know, there, I have heard some from residents around me that there is some confusion and feels like lacks of transparency around open comment, or when things are going to be available to talk and discuss, when the commission comes to the table to bring a new issue. And so we want to make sure that everybody's voices are being heard. It's not just the people in the room. And so listening is important. Good communication about when those things are going to happen. So not just ensuring that the neighbors in the room are the ones that are speaking, but the ones are, you know, that are not present, have an opportunity to input as well. So again, prioritizing clear communication, open dialogue, and active outreach to ensure that all voices are heard. Another thing that I like to do is kind of a needs assessment. I've used that at Georgia State before. We have 54,000 students. Sending a needs assessment out is really important. Like, what do you want to see us talk about? What do you feel like is a big issue? And yes, we can see those on social media pages. What's also true is we can get it all in one place and data our numbers, but they represent people. And I think the more voices we have, the better it is to kind of engage our community.
Thank you. Another reader question. This reader says, the city struggles with maintenance, like upkeep of sidewalks, crosswalks, tree pruning, and facilities maintenance. How can the city do a better job of maintaining the things it has? And we'll start with Katie Bell.
Am I on mute?
Uh, no.
No, okay. So thinking about maintenance, maintenance isn't, you know, something that is really glamorous. At the same time, it's really important. So when maintenance is neglected, like sidewalks, like trash, like public spaces, it's important to make sure that we are addressing those things too. So maintenance is a promise that when we build something or we do a project that we keep it. So I know that the 25, 26 budget includes funds reserved for capital maintenance, for example, repairing parking decks, preserving our conference center and maintaining infrastructure. So I would push that we develop more of a transparent maintenance schedule and prioritize neglected areas and ensure that inspection and upkeep are part of the everyday planning. So it's not, it's not pristine photo ops necessarily, but it's also important to understand like where we're right around the corner from our square where we can kind of, we dedicate to making sure that maintenance gets repaired. So again, listening, prioritizing what our community members are saying is an issue. And that's how I think we can, you know, make sure that we're ensuring maintenance is done.
Thank you. Mark Arnold, same question.
Um, I'm going to say that maintenance is part of a broader topic, and it really comes down to financial constraints. We have a lot of priorities in this city. We have a lot of things we want to do well. We want to take care of the homeless. We want to make housing affordable. We want to provide a world-class education, right? And, and, and so the city, about 40 cents of each tax dollar spent is actually spent by the city. So this, and that covers everything, fire, police, parks and rec, general administration. So the city government is, is actually highly efficient, given that they're only taking 40 cents of each tax dollar. The rest goes to the schools. And, and this becomes the very hard sort of conversation around priorities, how you balance priorities. And there's not an easy answer. And I think it comes back to keep an open mind, seek diverse opinions, and remember that, you know, we are focused on advancing our shared vision and core values. But it's not easy. And, 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 and it is basically a financial decision, right? What are you willing, what are you going to be willing to spend less on or have less of? Because that is the choice that has to be made.
Thank you. Move on to another reader question. Reader asks, I'd like to know more about your positions on equity and transparency. Are these things a priority for you? Mark Arnold.
Equity and transparency. I assume that the reader is talking about city government, right? And, and I'll tell you a story. I'll answer the question by telling you a story, which is dangerous. When I first moved to Decatur, I got my tax bill. And it was a large tax bill. And I said, okay, well, let me go down to City Hall and find out what this tax bill is about. The tax bill, the city commission told me, your argument's not with us, Mr. Arnold, it's with the Board of Education. I went to the Board of Education and I said, can you explain this tax bill? I'm not opposed to paying it, but I'd like to understand where the money's going. At that time, there was no budget for the city schools provided to the public. So I actually led a, a community effort that resulted in producing public access to the first line item budget from the city schools of Decatur. All to say that, you know, 20 years ago, 20 plus years ago, I was adamant that there had to be greater transparency around the way we were spending money. I wasn't opposed to it, but you just have to explain it to us. And that hasn't changed.
Thank you. Katie Bell, same question.
Um, when I think about kind of equity and transparency, I think that equity and transparency are foundational to my campaign. It's a part of who I am in my genetic makeup. For equity, that means ensuring whatever the resources, services, and opportunities are, that they're distributed fairly, with special attention to historically underrepresented or underserved residents. For transparency, it means plain language, communication, accessible meetings, real accountability. So Decatur, we should lead with honesty about challenges, openness about decisions, and deep commitment to building a city where residents all feel heard and seen. When thinking about tax and budgeting and fiscal responsibility, yes, residents deserve transparency and accountability. Balancing investment of infrastructure, public spaces and service while keeping taxes fair and sustainable is important to keep that balance. And taxes need to be based, in my opinion, based upon inflation rather than property value. So thinking about generally equity and transparency, it's something that I do every day at Georgia State and advocating for voices who are oftentimes not at the table and using that listening ear is a strength of mine that I'll commit to do when considering equity and transparency as Commissioner of District One.
Katie, another reader question. We got several questions about this, actually. Do you think parking is a problem in Decatur? And if so, how should the city address it? And would you support two hours of free parking on city streets to support local businesses? You, you are on mute.
Um, so I believe that parking, transportation, and traffic are deeply connected issues in Decatur. While technically we have enough parking, I think residents and visitors often feel it's hard to find or it's confusing. And so if that perception is there, then it's important to remember that that's the reality that our visitors and our residents feel. I would focus on making sure that parking is more user-friendly, so accessible and clear signage. Mr. Beef, hold on. Um, I think that partnerships and keeping parking affordable for customers and employees is definitely important. So I would support that. And also, traffic is kind of in there as well. And then safety is one of my top priorities. This means that our calming efforts that we have in place, so lowering speeds so that people can walk and bike are important. Improving crosswalks and lighting is essential too, and working closely with the Georgia Department of Transportation for safer routes will be good as well. So I think it's really important too, when thinking about transportation, balancing cars, pedestrian and bikes, truly being connected to Decatur means that kids have the opportunity to walk safely to school. It's convenient to bike to Marta and visitors are able to park as well. So the skill that I'll utilize is listening, reflecting the needs of all communities, and making sure that the partners have already established with our county and state representatives and political, political officials are maintained and using those partnerships that everybody feels that that's something that can be improved.
Thank you. Mark Arnold, same question.
So parking is a great example of where we as a city and our leadership need, need to be really, and should be, very data-driven, as I believe they are in arriving at decisions. Roughly speaking, you know, coming out of the mobility plan, there was an inventory done of parking in Decatur. So we have roughly 10,500 parking spaces throughout the city in parking lots, surface lots, and decks. We've got about another 650 or so surface street parking. And, and so the, there are things we can do, way better, better wayfinding, better making it easier for people to locate the parking. And there's technology that we can invest in to help people. We've, we've, we've deployed parking meters that make it easy to pay. Now, what we have to do is complete the data gathering. We have the inventory. Now we have to match that up with the usage data. And once we complete that, we will have all the information to determine which of the parking technologies that are available to us will be the right ones for Decatur, what we need to do around signage and different things. So is it a problem? If people think it's a problem, then it's a problem. And we're in the process of gathering the data to, to come up with the best possible response to addressing the, the needs and challenges around parking.
I, I love that you both acknowledged that perception is reality in politics. That's, that's always nice to hear. Mark Arnold, starting with you, what should the city do to preserve its naturally occurring affordable housing and keep investors from buying properties in the city?
So affordable housing is a big challenge. It is one of the key community priorities articulated in our strategic plan. And it led to the creation of Affordable Housing Task Force, right? So if you want to have a diverse community, that means you got to have people of different income levels, and that goes to affordable housing. So, you know, I'm just going to say, preventing people from buying housing or investors, it, it's simply inconsistent with the American economic system. So I, I just, I, I just don't see how, first of all, legally, you couldn't do it. So let's just, let's just leave it at that, right? The law will not provide, allow the government to usurp the private property rights of an individual or a citizen. So that's just going to be a non-starter legally. But I think, you know, if, if you get back to naturally occurring affordable housing, right? I think there are things that you can do. Five, 10-year tax abatement. If you keep your naturally occurring housing unit affordable, we will work with you as a city and through a tax rebate program for the property owner, right? So that's, that, that's one way that we can shore up and maintain that very precious source of affordable housing.
Uh, Mr. Arnold, you have 16 seconds left. I wanted to clarify the meaning of my questions. By investors, I mean like hedge funds, uh, coming in, these big corporate companies that come in and buy properties and, and rent them out, not individuals. I don't know if that makes any difference in your answer, but I did just want to point that out in case I wasn't clear.
The Supreme Court decided that corporations are people. I mean, this is, we're just not going to win that one.
Fair enough. Katie Bell, same question.
So I think, you know, affordability, when we think about housing and infrastructure is, it's a pillar of my campaign. It's, I think it's important to do what it takes in order to make sure that we are supporting that missing middle housing. I live in affordable housing here in Decatur. And also, I know that, not speaking to the point that Mark was presenting, but I think that when we have safe neighborhoods, then we have strong schools. And the reason I say that is because I think it's important that we have some workforce housing incentives. So we need to prioritize that our teachers can live here, our EMS, our police. If we do that through down payment or rental assistant programs, I think we can partner with local banks and nonprofits to target housing support. That is possible. City-owned land, when I think about how we can support affordable housing, I think about the Decatur Land Trust. I get really curious about that. And yes, property tax and utility rebates are possible. So how do we ensure that we are also making modest rebates potentially for city employees living in Decatur to offset the high costs of housing? I supported the senior tax exemption. So I think that's really important to look at policies that allow our individuals to, that are here or want to live here, to stay here or to grow their families here. But also supporting developments like Legacy Park, like our senior tax exemption, like our Decatur Land Trust. These are ways that I think that we can support affordable housing and infrastructure as a whole.
Thank you. Katie, you brought up taxes. And as fate would have it, our next question is about taxes. And we'll start with you. Do you support increasing or lowering the city's millage rate and why?
I do not support raising taxes in our millage rate. I think it's important that when we already are having affordability issues and concerns, that I think the real, I think I alluded to this earlier, is that I think that our taxes need to be tied to inflation rather than property value. And that's really important.
Thank you. Mark, same question.
So, uh, two ways to answer this question. You don't have to increase the millage rate. incre- you don't have to increase the millage rate to increase taxes. When the property appraisals come in for this, for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, the tax digest, which is the value of all properties, commercial and residential across the city, increased by eight percent, okay? With this, so no increase in the millage rate, you have a natural eight percent increase in taxes. So now the question becomes one of what are you willing to do less of or do without, right? Because if you don't, if you either want to roll back the millage rate to keep taxes constant, right? Then that's forcing a decision on which of the priorities go first and which of the priorities take a backseat. Because at the end of the day, there's only so much money to go around, right? Um, in addition to the eight percent increase in our digest, the city then dipped into fund reserve, which is just a fancy way of saying fund balance, which is just a fancy term for the city's rainy day fund and transferred one point eight, one point five million to the operating account. So you had an eight percent increase in the value of the digest. You then transferred one point five million from your rainy day account. Is that bad? I don't know. What they were doing was funding the priorities of the citizens. The citizens said, this is our vision, these are our priorities. And the government responded by using, by spending its money in a way that the citizens wanted. Um, so we have to be very conscious of that decision of what we're spending and can we, can we do it all? At the, no, we can't do it all at the same time. So we're going to have to have a hard conversation about what goes first.
Thank you. And believe it or not, we're at our last question of the evening. So good job, everybody knocking these out. Uh, been very informative. Last question, uh, it, it is part of the city, but it's not. And you don't have to spend a lot of time on this if you don't want to. But starting with Mark Arnold, what is your opinion of the school district's plans to build an early childhood learning center near the high school?
You know, um, the city schools of Decatur have, they are, I would consider one of the crown jewels of Decatur. My two kids went through city schools of Decatur, K through twelve, and got a fantastic education. Um, so it's a really important part of what makes this a really vibrant, attractive um, community. Having said that, um, under state law, the school board is a separate government entity. It has powers of taxation, it controls its property and it's elected by the public. And so I think it would be appropriate, inappropriate for someone who may be a member of another branch of government to second guess an independent branch of government that the voters have put in place to pursue their values and their priorities around education. Um, the city runs its ship very well and I, I think the voters should be entitled to the same kind of um, transparency that they get from the city, the same kind of collaboration, the same kind of community-led leadership. But ultimately, they are a separate entity under law and the voters put them there. And um, I, I think it's not really appropriate to second guess what that body does.
Thank you. Katie Bell, same question.
So in thinking about school and education, I think although a commission does not run schools, we impact the environment that students learn in. So when we think about safe streets, strong public spaces, affordable housing that directly impacts families, these are all things the commission um, is, is responsible for. At the same time, schools are the core of our community. And as an educator and a counselor, I understand that this is something, this is something I'm very passionate about. So I think something that would be beneficial is joint planning sessions. I think they could really make a difference when it comes to, there are so many issues like the ELC that we could collaborate on. Together we could, could address, you know, systemic issues. I envision regular city school summits with shared dashboards on enrollment and housing, transit, aligning calendars, um, and projects because like co-designing safe routes to school. I think all designs and shared values and visions and voices should be at the table. And I think a great way to do that, if it's the early learning center or one of the things I mentioned earlier, is by having uh, regular city school summits with each other.
Thank you. I will note for the benefit of our audience that uh, the ECLC topic has probably been one of the more uh, controversial of the last few years. And yet, uh, nobody qualified to run uh, in school board races, rather, there were no contested school board races uh, this year and there weren't city commissions. So read into that what you will. We are at the end of our candidate forum tonight. I'm going to give each candidate, uh, my thanks, first of all, for joining us. I'm also going to give you uh, two minutes to make a closing statement. But before we do that, I want to remind everyone, our fall fundraiser is going on right now. Please visit support your local news.com and contribute if you appreciate the opportunity we provided to you this evening. And with that, we're going to roll into our closing statements, starting with Katie Bell. You have two minutes.
Uh, thank you, Dan, for having us. It was an excellent conversation. I feel that um, maybe, I hope that, you know, constituents feel more informed about each of our views. I want to, you know, reacknowledge that I bring an expertise to this work and uh, I had the privilege of running four years ago. And since then, I did stay engaged. I listened to neighbors, I learned what matters to everyone and I prepare, I'm prepared to serve now. So um, I bring a new, fresh energy and commitment to serve my district and all of Decatur well, um, with love, compassion and respect. And as an educator and a therapist, I turn listening into action every day. And I'm trained to think critically, listen actively and mediate differences with care and fairness. And this is uh, the approach that I will take as your city commissioner of district one. If you do want to learn more about my campaign, please visit votekatiebell.com and you can count on me to listen, be accountable and bring people together. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Mark, um, for having, you know, civil discourse. I think this was a great opportunity for both of us to talk about things that to Decatur, matter to Decatur most.
Thank you. Mark, final words to you, sir.
Thanks again, uh, for the opportunity, Dan. Um, as I said at the beginning, we love this community. We've been here twenty-six years. We don't see ourselves going anywhere else. Um, you know, I've done everything, I've volunteered in, in many capacities, served on many commissions. It's just since day one, it's, it's really been this passion for engagement and collaboration and service to make this a better and better and better community. So, so I want to continue that. Um, I bring a lot of financial expertise um, to uh, the role, just given what I've done professionally, my education and so forth. And, and I think we as a community will face some pretty significant financial headwinds, whether they be from the economy, whether they be the restructuring of our federal government and our social contract. You know, we're going to have some hard decisions to make, some hard discussions to have. How do we pay for our priorities, right? Um, and we're going to have challenges. We do have challenges, housing affordability, homelessness, economic development. And there are things that are unforeseen that will come up. And, and, and what I would emphasize is, let's be open-minded, let's seek diverse perspectives and let's remember our shared values. And what's going to make us successful, right? We are a successful community. Let's not forget that. We are an incredibly successful community. And if we leverage what made us successful, which is an involved community, a culture of engagement, strong communication, inclusive community-based leadership style, collaboration, a community-based vision and values and openness, diversity and equity, we will continue to be successful. So I hope you'll support me on November fourth.
Thank you both for joining us. Thank you both for your, your interest in public service. Uh, good government requires good people uh, willing to step up and, and put their hat in the ring and, and serve. So we appreciate that. This is the Decatur City Commission District One Forum, the first of our many, many municipal election forums headed in uh, to the November fourth election. If you want the full schedule, visit support, uh, excuse me, visit decaturishvotes.com. That's where you can get all of our uh, election coverage. Supportyourlocalnews.com is where you can donate to our fundraiser and we will see you back here at seven thirty PM for the Decatur City Commission District Two Forum. See you in a few minutes, everybody.